It's time to rock and roll.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Randy Kemp and I'm chairing this meeting tonight. We have a quorum with Shawna Mathias here in Roslyn Parks. So we'll call the meeting to order. Ask the ladies approval of the agenda.
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all right. We approved the agenda. And the minutes from the previous meeting? Have you had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Minutes are approved. So from there, a report from the code officer, Brad.
Just one bit of housekeeping. I'm not sure what's going on here while this isn't working. Okay. I just wanted to mention real quick that, there we go. I'm running a little slow. The battery's out on this one mic. Yeah. Let me switch those out real quick if you don't mind. Just real quick, housekeeping. Tomorrow night is the kickoff meeting for our form-based code, Codeapalooza that will happen in January. So tomorrow night is a Zoom meeting. The consultant is out of Franklin, Tennessee. So they're, instead of coming all down with their entire crew just for one kickoff meeting that would last about an hour, they're gonna have this via Zoom. The information is on a poster outside in the lobby. It's been there for about a month. We put some ads in the paper too to get some public awareness of this. Apparently, the QR code on this graphic is corrupted, so do not select that QR code. But you can go to our webpage. There's a link specifically on the webpage that takes you straight to the Zoom. It's not corrupted. It's totally safe. But anyone who's interested in that can certainly sit in on that. It's not interactive. It would be just simply a presentation only. And I think their interviews from the planning commission have all been conducted except for Roslyn, who you have. Are you still good for 2:30 on Thursday? We tried to confirm everyone because we had council and planning commission members. We had 14 slots and had to get them as they came in in the order that they came in for availability. Are you gonna?
I'll be available.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Any old business other than that? Then we'll move right into our new business. And the first thing on the agenda here is certificate of appropriateness for the signage, 1490 Highway 78. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of that?
Yes.
I'm gonna give a quick, I'll give a little spiel real quick if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. They're requesting two new wall signs. This is the frontage of the building that faces US Highway 78. They're gonna replace the existing sign there now, which is a Marathon Gas symbol, I think, in the spot. They're showing is Walton Truck Stop. They also have a tenant. They're asking to place a wall sign there. For each one of those signs, they both comply with the size requirements of our zoning ordinance. The only hitch that really was the issue with this particular request, these signs are fine in their size and the type of material they're using. They're just proposing to internally illuminate them, which we do not allow. So the condition has been placed upon there to, that the signs shall not have internal illumination. And then any illumination shall be downward and upward facing with backlit or halo lettering only. And just to give you an idea, that sign was already in compliance before. You see, they had the overheads. So I think this is just the sign company trying to, they're not local, so they're probably not aware of the fact we don't allow internal lighting. So the sign before there complied. We're just asking that it also continue to comply. Plus, they don't have to install new lights for the sign. But anyway, that was the condition that was recommended for approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Now, would you, someone like to speak with us? Sure. If you come up here, please, and state your name.
My name is Sung Kim from the Sign Tech. I'm the owner of the sign company. And when I applied a sign permit, I didn't check the sign ordinance about the lighting. I just checked the size. And if your sign ordinance is not allowed international illumination, you just make the bank sign. Yeah. Yeah. I complied with your sign ordinance.
So we, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments about this? If not, we'll call a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. It's approved. Thank you. Next is the conditional use permit for a childcare home, 907 Amber Trail.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is for a, this is a conditional use approval request for a childcare home at 907 Amber Trail. And that's in Evergreen Estates subdivision. And they're asking for the childcare home. As you recall, you may have seen one of these here recently where they have the allowance in a childcare home in an R1 zone to have up to six kids under their care. And it can't be for a period longer than 24 hours. It's a similar request to the one you'd seen several months ago. Very close in its similarity. They are asking for the same thing, to provide care up to six kids. They're proposing to operate this childcare home from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily. There's a two-car garage, a two-car driveway in front of the home that should be ample to deal with the drop-offs and pickups of these kids from the home. And as I mentioned before, they are allowed to have a childcare home as a conditional use approval in R1. So we're recommending approval of that with the two conditions that they comply with the maximum requirement, which states childcare home shall operate as described in the applicant's narrative and shall not provide care to more than six children at any time. And if the property is sold, the CUP basically shall become null and void. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is anyone here to speak? Please come forward. And tell us your name, please.
Nakeisha Brooks Ward. I want to be able to work with children. I love, I have a compassion for kids. I've worked with them for 20 years. So I've been in the education field for 20 years and I, God given, opportunity to own my own. I would like to start it in my home.
Good. Any questions? If not, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition of this? Hearing none, I'll call a motion.
I move we approve with conditions.
Second.
With condition, a motion approved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next is a certificate of appropriateness for a car wash, 130 Bankers Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for a certificate of appropriateness on your corridor design overlay district. They are proposing to develop 130 Bankers Boulevard with a car wash. Things, as you can see on the plan behind you, that facility would be accessed off of a, orient you real quick. Bankers Boulevard is here on the bottom of the plan and it's West Spring Street, the right side of the site. They're proposing to access that site from the, from Liberty Lane, which is a private drive. I believe I have the wrong plan on the screen. Just so you know, your plan and your, that's the wrong plan. It is. It's an older plan that we had. It's a draft, so I apologize. We did review the current plan that the applicant had submitted. But the orientation of the plan, there were a few changes that we had asked them to make. They're still represented on this drawing here, just so you know. But they're proposing to put the car wash building here in the northeast corner of the site, which is at the southwest corner of the intersection of Bankers and West Spring. And they'll have a little drive-through that'll lead the car wash facility to a vacuum area. You can see the paved kiosk prior to entering the building and the flow of the traffic essentially would be moving around the site in that manner. So we've asked that they landscape the site with various trees and we've asked them to add hedges to the drive around. Well, that's just, it's not the right plan at all. I must have, this is my fault. I didn't upload the current plan on this, so this is my fault. But in your packet should be the current plan, just so you know. These images are not correct. But on their plan, they had added the hedges around here as we had asked them to do. Block headlight glare and shield it from vehicles traveling east and west on West Spring Street. And let's see, I think the other major features of that for your corridor design overlay district, they were complied with and there's some middle, including the architectural requirements. They were showing a predominant brick veneer with stone water table at the bottom and an ephesus at the top of that with a little parapet wall feature throughout with this turret-like feature at the top with a hip and ridge roof on top of that. The architecture complied with your CDO requirements. And as I mentioned before on the other plan, they are proposing a wall here to kind of shield the parking, the vacuum area from West Spring Street. From that vacuum area, and the vacuum area, if I'm not mistaken, will be covered, as you can see here. There's a, brick columns will support a, basically a canopy structure over the vacuum areas itself. So the recommendation is approval, subject to the two conditions that were outlined in your report. There were no signs, representation submitted with this request, so they'll have to come back to you for sign approval. And then, then we're asking that to, and the second condition that was submitted, be substantially complied with in the development. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Right. This is actually right behind Pinnacle Bank, is that right? Brad?
Yeah, this is to the, to the south and east.
South and east, okay, all right.
The Pinnacle Bank.
Very good. Is anyone here to speak regarding this project?
My name's Ned Butler, representative of M.T. Land Investments. Brad did a good job of explaining everything. This is the plan that, after we dealt with his comments, as you can see in green, these are the hedges that run along the front. The trees added here, along the side and the front. And then the wall added in front of the vacuums to shield. And both the walls and the trees will help with the noise of the vacuums. There's that large slope that leads up the hill to Pinnacle Bank, so it'll kind of create a bowl in there where that parking lot area is. Other than that, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Will that enter from, on what side? From that Bankers Grove?
It will enter in from Liberty Lane. So when you come in Bankers Boulevard, you take a right to go in the backside of Pinnacle that runs into the back of Applebee's. So you'll turn off that road. And that'll be where you enter and leave.
Okay.
There's a curb cutoff of Bankers that we had, we'd asked them to, in order to comply with the CDO requirements, to make an accommodation to not use that driveway because their original draft plans were just trying to use the existing curb cut, made sense. But it created conflicts with meeting your requirements, so we asked them to, if they could, to enter off Liberty. And I believe they were able to make that accommodation work. That way, the building was able to be shifted away from the back of the site towards, towards the corner to basically meet your minimum building setback, or maximum building setback of 75 feet. They're able to meet that requirement with this layout.
Okay, all right. Questions, ladies?
No.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this project?
Hi, my name, my name's John Thompson. And I'm here to represent the Commons at Bankers Grove. The office, the offices that sit on the property next to this on the other side of Bankers Boulevard. It's approximately 22 individual offices. And our concern is basically that we're an office complex. And honestly, this came to me just a couple of weeks back. I didn't even know this was occurring myself. But when I saw, when I saw a sign go up, that's when, yeah, tried to find out what was going on. Our issue is concern of noise, excessive noise for those offices there from, from that business, that type of a business. And, you know, to go along with that, the lighting and the possible trash and the traffic back and forth and whatnot, how that would affect the offices that sit across the street. I don't know, you know, if that was taken into consideration during, when the code department was doing their review. We personally were not contacted by the coding department to ask any questions or to find out any information from, from us. So I would ask for, very least, a continuance so we could maybe meet with the two associations there, Air Association as well as the other business association for, to discuss this further.
Can I address just a few of this gentleman's comments? I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir.
John Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I appreciate, appreciate those comments. This is not your typical request. These are, these are certificates of appropriateness, not for the uses of the property itself. This is a design procedure. Basically, they're just trying to meet certain criteria of our ordinance when it comes to the design of a site. So, but to answer your question, we notified it 30 days in advance, which is our minimum requirement for notification on a certificate of design overlay. We don't mail out on the CDO.
Just the posting that was there?
We post a sign and we put an ad in the paper. So that, we, we're meeting the minimum legal notice for just a design hearing. It's up to, you know, the planning commission and their decision if they think that this is appropriate, but they're responsible for making sure that it meets the design requirements of just the building aesthetics, the location of the building, where the parking is located. And I can tell you that I was limited in my review to the issues that you're describing, which are land use impacts. There was nothing in our ordinance that prohibited this land use from being on this property under B3 zoning.
Okay. And then as well as that, was it taken into consideration the covenants that are set up?
I actually did review your covenants and there were no restrictions to this type of land use at all. Because I did research that. Because if, if there is gonna be a hitch like that, I need to know that as well, even though they're privately enforced.
Yeah.
So in a review of your covenants, there was, there were specific, there were quite a few specific land uses that were excluded from being allowed anywhere in the Bankers Boulevard, or Banker?
Bankers Grove.
Bankers Grove, yeah. But car washes were not. That was pretty much all I had to, to offer to that.
So our role here would be not to necessarily judge the use of the project being, being good. But doesn't city council get this next glance with it?
No, you are, you are the corridor design overlay commission. So your, your charge is to, is, is the request meeting the corridor design overlay requirements? Or are they not?
And it is?
Correct.
Correct.
So, but I don't want to, I'm not trying to short this gentleman on his concerns because they probably are legitimate concerns because this is, this could be a land use issue that the city council definitely needs to be aware of. This may not be the last car wash we see in the city of Monroe.
Well, there's one approximately 1,000 feet away as well on either side of the route, but that's.
Totally.
Either here nor there, I get that.
Totally get the optics on that, trust me. I understand completely. The, I think, I think this, this commission is limited in its capacity to make a land use decision this evening. They have to consider the design elements only. And they can take into whatever consideration they want when they vote. But they, they have a limited, they have a limited function tonight in terms of those impacts that you worked, you had concerns about.
Well, our role is, in this situation, a certificate of appropriateness, which would be a motion to approve. But beyond that, you know, we don't have any, any power to deny or go further. So do I have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve or deny?
Before you do that, I have a question for him. Can you share some of the covenants that you think would be, would impact this?
Well, I mean, we have excessive noise. Let's see.
I think it was something dealt with, excessive runoff was one of the things I had read as well.
Runoff, the, the, the issue of trash. And I guess they'll have, they'll have containers, I'm sure, and all that stuff. But you have people washing cars and cleaning out their cars. There's gonna be stuff that obviously doesn't make it to where it's supposed to be, so we'll have that as well. And then, you know, our biggest thing is, how is this gonna affect the other businesses that are there? I mean, the, the rest of it's just offices. You know, I mean, so it's not like it's, there's, it's, it's very quiet. And to have that, that kind of a business come in is going, it may push other businesses out of their complex. So that's kind of where we're at. And we wanted to have more discussion about that. Time has not allowed that to, to have occurred at this point. So that's why I was asking, you know, at the very least, for a continuance.
Can I ask you one other question, Mr. Thompson? That, is there a architectural control committee or a board vote or something that required, if these guys are gonna do this, they need your final say-so on the matter?
Other than coming to the associations and, and speaking with them as far as actual approval, I, I, from what, I spoke to Ned and it sounded like there was some type of communications. I wasn't part of it, but I, I don't know to what extent that was and with whom. And that was one of the reasons why, you know, I came here.
Without knowing the procedures of how your, how that entity works specifically, there may be a step beyond the city's approval of this project that Ned and, and his party's interest in this property and they need to get your approval. So there may be, you may have a final say-so on this matter before it's all said and done. But I don't think that those, like, especially the, the private issues when it comes to covenants, they have no ability to control that.
Yeah. Okay.
Brad, are we able to ask Ned about if he's met with about approval for this?
Sure. You can ask whatever you want. By all means.
Ned, will you come up?
So yes, this past July, we sent a request to the Bankers Grove Property Owners Association Board with a layout that actually showed a coffee shop as well. But, and that didn't end up working out. So we ended up just moving forward with the car wash. The layout has changed slightly because of the access point. The building, only changed the building from what we presented to the association board was the addition of the wall that the city asked for. That, it was approved by that board. The way the associations work, there is one association that encompasses Pinnacle, Applebee's, Longhorns, Zack's Bees, the dermatologist, and the condo association as one member. The condo association is one member. And then all the other parcels I just listed, along with the Hurdle Real Estate Building as well. So there is a board of Nina Knight, which is the representative from the condo association, a representative of our lot, a representative from Hurdle, and a representative from the bank. Makes up a five-person board.
Perfect.
And just, you know, as far as trash, we've got a building and walls that are gonna encompass two of the sides here. And then there is a very steep slope that goes up toward the pinnacle. So the only way trash is really gonna leave, if it does, is gonna be out the westerly portion towards Liberty Lane. We will have trash receptacles at all spaces, as you would typically see. And we'll have staff on site walking the site every day to keep the trash cleaned up. We also hope that the, the noise will be centered in between those three wall building and slope, for the most part. We will put dampers on the blowers that will blow your car off when you leave. So they will be louder when the actual blower is running, is blowing on a car. They will sit idle and not have that same noise. But that will be on the inside of the building, so it will mainly be projected towards Spring Street, not in the direction across the street from Bankers Boulevard towards the condo association. We are trying to meet in with the brick to meet with corridor design and also brick colors and stone colors to meet with that of other buildings in Bankers Grove as well.
Perfect. I'm done with my question.
You want questions?
No, I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go with a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll use the call for a motion. Are you gonna?
Second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And next is request to COA of exterior improvement, 208 South Broad Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is here, this is for your certificate of appropriateness for your CBD. So this is the one slightly different than the corridor design overlay. You've seen several requests in the city for those types of applications. They're a little less intense. But this is a, this is the old McGarvey Building down on 28, 28 South Broad. And you can see the existing photographs that the applicants provided of the existing conditions. The focus of most of this request, though, would be regarding the northwest corner portion of the building itself. So they're proposing to make quite a few improvements to the lot. It's currently vacant. I believe it was used as a parking lot for a handful of decades, I wanna say. I can't, I couldn't find a record of a building actually being on that lot, but I'm sure there was at one, some, one point in the past. But I can see that it was a parking lot for a long time. So they're asking to make improvements to that lot and attach it to this building as part of the overall enhancements that are currently going on at 208 South Broad. They're going to be adding sidewalk features and some gathering spaces and a balcony platform outside the side of the building itself. It's gonna be some nice enhancements for this building as the applicant continues to upgrade this. He has all of his historic preservation approvals that are needed for this site. And he is asking now for a CBD COA approval. Just to give you some idea, too, there's some renderings, too, for what's gonna happen on that property. I believe the front was mostly just tables and everything, right, Chad?
What'd you ask?
That, that area in the front, this was just gathering space and landscaping, some other treatment in the front. Not, not particularly intensive there, but most of the changes would occur here on, on the lot adjacent to the building itself. Should be a neat enhancement to this area and be an asset to downtown area. And the recommendation is approval as submitted. I just want to make one note, and Chad's already aware of this. He's, he and I've had this conversation. As they move forward in the site development plan process, this, this on-street parking feature here can remain, but there may be a need for him to dedicate up to the sidewalk to the city. So we maintain it as opposed for that responsibility falling on the owner. We either want all of it or none of it, or they have to meet our off-street parking requirements, which would, which would put an unnecessary burden on them to have to put parking on the site and detach from the road. So if he's up for that, we can have that conversation later. But otherwise, staff supports the request. Recommendation is approval as submitted without conditions.
Chad, tell us who you are.
My name is Chad Draper with JEC Development. This building was built in 1921 as a Ford dealership. It's 19,000 square feet. And so our intention is to make it a mixed-use facility. It's very difficult to lease 19,000 square feet to any one business. So we've gotta figure out how to demise it. And so a, a big part of the, the side view of it, where you see the doors and the windows, is an effort to make it into more than one business. We're currently in talks with a brewery to locate upstairs and then don't have anybody slated for downstairs yet. Happy to answer any questions. We are, as Brad said, we've already gone before the local HPC board and they've approved it. We're also going after historic tax credits We're also going after historic tax credits through the National Park Service and the state of Georgia, the Department of Community Affairs, and those rules are very stringent in order to get those tax credits, so we're gonna meet whatever their criteria is, which is very strict, so happy to answer any questions.
When this came through, I was very excited.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
How many businesses do you expect or hope to put in there?
It's kind of hard to answer that. Currently, the way it's shaping up, if the brewery takes the entire top floor, and we, we haven't signed a lease, but we're close, if they take the whole top floor, then that would most likely just leave the basement, and it would most likely just be one tenant. I don't want to promise that it's only gonna be two users, but it, it seems like it's shaping up that way. We've explored multiple ideas. We, we explored for a while having apartments upstairs and different, different variations, but it appears that there's gonna be a brewery upstairs and then a second tenant downstairs, and that tenant is unknown at this time.
Oh.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone here in opposition? I don't see anybody. Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you. A motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. That's our last agenda item. And anything else, Brad?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, all right. Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you.